Good evening. I call to order the Committee of the Whole Board of Directors meeting for February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the Fledgled Agents. My Fledgled Agents.
To the flag.
Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please? Vice President Fred Green.
President.
Representative William Riley. Assistant Karen Crowe.
President.
Board Member Ken Washington. Board Member Christina Delton. Board Member Joy Tella.
President.
Board Member Ben McCarren.
President.
Board Member Beverly Harris. Madam President, June eighteenth.
President.
Okay, we'll start this evening with the DCIU report from Chairman Gergen.
Good evening. Reporting on Delaware County Intervene meeting here at our monthly board meeting, we approve a number of items. One approved is professional learning opportunities for district and IU staff. We approved several contracts with Rose Tree Media School District to provide coaching and consultation for English learning and arts curriculum. We also approved a contract for them to provide and facilitate professional learning Communities PLC into discussions from January two thousand and twenty-three going through June two thousand and twenty-three. The DCIU is going to provide district enrollment and participation with the Coalition Student Agency voice for the two thousand and twenty-two school year through the two thousand and twenty-three school year. We also approved an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the DCIU to receive thirty thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars for the Refuse to School Impact Funds for the DCIU to support Delaware County School Districts through training and parent engagement activities. We also approved contracts with districts and other partners for programs and services, including Chester School District for access data input and record and keeping monitoring system services through July first through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. We approved contracts with Garden Valley School District for the DCIU to provide educational services at the George W. Hill Correctional Facility from July first, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. Approved contracts with Radnor Township District for DCIU to provide educational services at St. Edgemont Home from July two thousand and twenty-two through July two thousand and twenty-three. Also, I want to report that the... We also oversee the Delaware County Technical Schools. And our students from Chester Upland School District, they participated in our regional competition. And during the last several weeks, students in various programs at the Delaware County Technical Schools participated in Skills USA District Two Regional Competitions. Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry representatives working together to ensure that United States has a skilled workforce. Skill USA provide educational programs, events, and competitions that support career and technical education in the nation's classroom. And so we want to congratulate Chester Upland students for coming in first place in criminal justice and emergency and protective services competition.
All right.
And that is my report.
Chairman Gergen, anyone have any questions? Okay, very well, we'll move right along with Chairman Quell, Rickham.
Good evening. As far as curriculum and education, at the next school board meeting, we will be seeking approval for two hundred and fifty dollars to cover the cost of Sandro's trophies. And this is where we purchase the awards and trophies for academic events, and those events are the Spelling Bee that we just had, the upcoming Science Fair, and the Math twenty-four competition. The second thing I have to report on is that what we'll be asking for an approval for Ms. Monique Hales to attend the Pennsylvania Association Federal Program Coordinators Annual Conference. The cost of that is one thousand one hundred and ten dollars. We'll also be seeking approval to renew the attendance Child Accounting Professional Association membership. This membership annually is two hundred and thirty dollars, and it is paid for out of the Title II grants fund. We'll be asking for approval to pay a registration fee for Marva Payne and Misha Guide to attend the two thousand and twenty-three PIMS Boot Camp. The cost is a hundred and fifty dollars, and this helps to... They will have some more training on data update information that we sent to the state. The reason the cost is only a hundred and fifty dollars is because this will be virtual training for two days for these ladies. And the last thing I have is approval of payment for Ms. Tammy Strawberry... Tammy Strand, I'm sorry, Yarbury, to attend the PA Association Federal Program Coordinators Annual Conference. The conference does take place April sixteenth through the nineteenth in the Poconos. The total cost is one thousand one hundred and ten dollars being paid out of S for two. And believe it or not, for this month, that concludes my report, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Ms. Quell. Any questions for her, Ms. Quell? Okay, we'll move right along to the HR report. The Department of Human Resources would like to thank everyone who assisted in spreading the word of the hiring event that was scheduled on January fourth. Human Resources has been able to onboard about six individuals already who attended the event, and we are happy to report that our facilities department is nearly at full staff. Human Resources has continued to recruit for staff, and after evaluating the two thousand and one, two thousand and two end-of-year resignations, HR has begun recruiting staff for the two thousand and three, two thousand and twenty-four school year through pool interviewing and anticipation of end-of-year resignations. High school, the current teaching vacancies are: Film Academy, no vacancies; Chester High School, one and two anticipated; Toby Farms, one vacancy; Lousa, one vacancy; Main Street, three vacancies; Edgemont Scholars Academy, one vacancy and three anticipated. The district would like to acknowledge and express our thanks to Dr. Delores Wright, who will be retiring from the district in April, two thousand and twenty-three. Dr. Wright has served as an educator in the Chester Upland School District since nineteen eighty-two. We sincerely appreciate the dedication to the success of our students and wish Dr. Wright a happy retirement. Happy retirement, Dr. Wright. The district would also like to announce that Dennis Shaw has been selected to serve as the head football coach for the two thousand and three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Mr. Shaw has been on the district's coaching team for seven years, and we congratulate him on his new role as the head football coach. Congratulations, Mr. Shaw. That's my report for Human Resources.
I'd like to make a comment, Madam President.
Sure.
I am pleased to hear that we're already anticipating looking for people for the new school year. This is something that I thought we needed to do start early on for years, and I'm just excited that it's happening, and it's happening now.
Thanks to Dr. Pless and her team who is working diligently, you know, every day. Okay, now we will have the Policy Committee. I will report on the policy. In preparation for Committee of the Whole and Receiver's meeting, the Policy Committee met on Tuesday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The purpose of our meeting was to discuss policy revisions to category seven hundred property, adoption of new policies, and administrative regulations that provide the district's guidance on how to implement these policies, as well as one policy in category two hundred, pupils. The policy updates are posted to Board Docs. There are twenty-eight policy updates on the agenda with policy documents attached and detailed update document uploaded under E one. Any questions or comments regarding policies can be emailed to Dr. Latrice Maline, Assistant Superintendent at policies@chesteruplandsd.war. The next policy meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March second, two thousand and twenty-three at two thirty PM at thirteen fifty Edgemont to review board policy revisions, eight hundred operations. I have several policies, but I'm going to read the new policies. E seventeen on the agenda, policy seven oh two point one, volume two, two thousand and nineteen, crowdfunding. The purpose of this policy is the board recognizes that crowdfunding has become an increasingly popular method. I would school districts can procure funding for specific projects and/or programs. E eighteen, seven oh four, AR six, volume four, two thousand and eighteen, drinking water. The administrative regulations, ARs, provide the district schools... Besides the district slash schools guidance on compliance with the policy. The purpose is the district has a duty to maintain facilities that provide a safe supply of drinking water. E nineteen, seven oh five, AR zero, volume four, two thousand and nineteen, safety. The administrative regulations provide the district slash schools guidance on compliance with the policy. The purpose is the district will provide reasonable safety protections, adequate maintenance, maintenance and repairs of facilities, accident reports, and supervision regulations that seek to reduce the potential of injury to students, employees, visitors, others present on school property, and those present in school-sponsored activities and events. E twenty, seven oh five, volume four, two thousand and nineteen, general safety rules. The administration... The administrative regulations provide the district schools guidance on compliance with the policy. The purpose is the district is committed to operating its programs in the safest manner possible. Compliance by students and staff with the rules outlined in the administrative regulation will assist in achieving this objective. E twenty-one, seven oh five, AR two, volume four, two thousand and nineteen, hazardous slash unsafe condition reporting form. The administrative regulations provide the district schools guidance on compliance with the policy. The purpose is the form provides a way to report hazardous slash unsafe conditions. E twenty-two, seven oh five, AR three, volume four, two thousand and nineteen, facility safety and security inspection report. The administrative regulations provide the district schools guidance on compliance with the policy. The purpose is the form is a reminder of general areas and items to be inspected. E twenty-three, seven oh five, AR four, volume four, two thousand and nineteen, workplace safety committee. The administrative regulations provide the district slash schools guidance on compliance with the policy. The purpose is a workplace safety committee is established in the district for the purpose of accident and illness prevention. E twenty-four, seven oh seven, AR O, volume five, two thousand and eighteen, use of school facilities. The purpose is the district recognizes that the school buildings and grounds serve as the center of the community and are a valuable public resource. The district is committed to making district buildings, facilities, and property available to the community as much as possible under established and appropriate conditions when such use does not conflict with school activities and functions. E twenty-five, seven oh seven, AR one, volume five, two thousand and twenty, rules for use of school facilities. The purpose of this administrative regulation is the district does not assume responsibility for any loss, damage, or personal injury that may occur on district property during the use of facilities by approved organizations or groups. The rules outlined in the administrative regulation must be adhered to by all users of school facilities in addition to the stipulations established in board policy. E twenty-six, seven oh seven, AR one, volume five, two thousand and eighteen, rules. The administrative regulations provide the district schools guidance on compliance with the policy. Use of school facilities, the purpose is the district does not assume responsibility for any loss, damage, or personal injury that may occur on district property during the use of the facilities by approved organization or groups. The rules outlined in the administrative regulation must be adhered to by all users of school facilities in addition to the stipulations established in board policy. E twenty-seven, seven oh seven, AR two, volume five, two thousand and eighteen, application for use of school facility. The administrative regulations provide the district schools guidance on compliance with the policy. The purpose is adoption of an application for facilities use. E twenty-eight, seven oh nine, AR zero, volume four, two thousand and nineteen, building access. Purpose: Access to school buildings and grounds will be established by the superintendent where desired in coordination with the school safety and security coordinator in accordance with the guidelines outlined in the administrative regulation. That is the end of my reports. Any questions, anybody? If you have any questions, you could always, you know, email Dr. Maline at the, you know, her website, her email address. We heard. Ms. Betty, Chair.
Good evening.
Betty.
On behalf of the Department of Pupil Services, Heather Ford, there's somebody for it. Office of Pupil Services is completing its preparation for monitoring via the American Rescue Homeless Children and Youth Program, which provides federal funding to support students and families experiencing homelessness. The offices also have also initiated support from the Pennsylvania Training and Technical Assistance Network, the TEN, to engage in a review of the district's practices related to least restricted environment, inclusive practices, and out-of-district placement. In February, from the tenth, the sixth to the tenth, was School Counseling Appreciation Week. The Office of Pupil Services sponsored a Chick-fil-A box lunch for counselors and social workers to celebrate their role in supporting students. Lastly, we are continuing to... The planning and the coordination of Mental Health and Wellness Fair for parents to be held in April in conjunction with the Representative Kazim's office.
It was an account of the...
And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I guess that concludes all of the reports for the evening. Mr. Washington. Oh, okay. Chair, Mr. Washington is going to be here, but Ms. Quell will report.
Yes, Mr. Washington has asked me to report on the following facilities, and all of them, all four of them, are what I consider to be very good news. The district has actually hired a carpenter and locksmith, which is a position we definitely needed. In addition to that, three new custodians have been hired. We've been looking for custodians. The elementary and secondary Esso funded projects are proceeding on schedule. We've spoken meeting after meeting about the things that are being done to the building by the North Shore Project Management Team. The wonderful thing is that all the projects are on time. And the final thing is that, I know it's been a mild winter, but we've been so lucky. None of our buildings this year have had HVAC issues to no avail. And those are...
That's a good thing.
Mr. Washington, I don't see us meet soon.
Thank you. You want to have any questions? I guess we'll move to public comment. If anyone who has public comments, you can come up, say your name and address, then your comment.
Good evening and thank you so much. I have a list here, but I probably won't go through all of that. Oh, thank you, Jean Arnold, twenty-six oh one McCary Street in Chester, Pennsylvania. Mr. Green, you have in front of you a laptop, and I'm wondering if you could go on and see if you can find for me... Look at that look on his face. If you could find for me the ESO guidelines. I asked for that some time ago, and it was said that they would post on the website the guidelines for spending ESO funds. And I'm going to assume that your skills on the Chester Upland School District website are a lot stronger than mine, so I'm wondering whether or not while I'm talking, if you could go on the website and see if you could find the ESO guidelines for spending.
Because I am actually not connected to the internet. I'm eating off of...
Oh. Well, do you have a phone, or does anybody have any device where they could possibly do that? Because I know sometimes your cell phone doesn't let you format sufficiently to see some of the items. However, I do see the agenda there for January twenty-sixth, but I don't see... No, 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 that's another issue. I don't see an ESOT tab on there at all, and I know there's one somewhere on the website if you use a computer to...
Ms. Arnold, you probably want to save that question.
So I think all of my questions are probably for next week, if that's what I'm understanding. All right, so then I want to ask, what questions would I ask here?
Can I ask questions here, and then we answer?
Um.
If there's something that we might be able to say.
Um, well...
Now, this meeting is being recorded, and the receiver will all take a look at it, and the questions that are asked tonight, he'll answer them next week. Also, Ms. Pless has her hand up, so I'm assuming she has found something, because she's tax savvy.
So are you saying you can find the guidelines for ESO spending? Okay.
Go to home.
If you go to home and you go for family, there's a whole directory under B and that's your information, and you click it and it takes you right.
One of the things I had asked or suggested beforehand is if we could find a tab or an item on the table of contents that would... Logically or intuitively for ESO funding, because I wouldn't go to families to find out guidelines for ESO spending.
So you're saying just a tab that says ESO.
I'm wondering if we could find a list of tabs that would make it easier for someone to find that information. I wouldn't go under family to find out information about guidelines for ESO spending, is what I'm saying. And we could do it more than one place, but...
I agree with you. I just went, followed Dr. Pless's advice, and I don't understand why this is... All of the... Old days of table of contents is listed under family and student record. Makes no sense to me.
So, um...
And I know that Nafis has recognized and said that our district's website is very uneasy to navigate, and I know we are working on or supposed to be getting a new website soon. Know where we are in the process of it, but I will ask Nafis for an update. He can provide us with an updated Nafis meeting.
Well, I suppose they probably will. What continues to concern some of us in the community is that we keep asking the same things over and over and over again, and you guys have been there for at least a year now, and we've been talking about this website for at least a year, maybe two or three or more. So for us to continue to ask the same questions and get the same response and still continue to come and support is not encouraging. I'll say that. And the desire to see a change is very much needed. Um, so I'll move off of that one. Um, yes. The marquee for Chester High is still broken. I remember the receiver talking about his dismay about that a long time ago. Um, I did not hear what it would cost to have it repaired. I kind of do know that we are spending good deals of money on different things, and so that marquee being replaced, not replaced, repaired, thank you for the word, and the one at Toby could use some help also. Here again, I would just like to put that on the table as something for us to consider again. I'll sit down.
Go to receiver.
I'll sit down. I thought I heard that one could raise concerns here so that we could get a better answer next week, and it didn't necessarily have to be agenda items, just items of concern for the district. But if that's not the case, then I'll easily take my seat and ask my questions there, which is what I normally do.
It should be, um, it'd be questions for what was reported.
Okay, so let me try this one. I think I saw something here about policies for safety. Can I ask this question? Do we have a scheduled drill yet for an active shooter? Some time ago, we... Some time ago, that question was asked, and I would like to know whether or not we've actually executed our drill district-wide so that our students and staff would know what to do in the event of an active shoot. I kind of know the answer to the question is no, we haven't. We haven't executed one yet.
No.
Okay, and so we keep... Some of us keep asking for that. I think out of all of the things that are of concern for... Oh, Mr. Green, you mentioned the site that you visited in some of the classes, or there was an award that our young people received.
Yes.
Is there some way that you could help us understand the list of courses that are taught at those locations that you visited?
So, I didn't actually visit. They had a competition of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors also oversee...
Of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors also oversee Delaware County Technical Schools, and they had a competition. And our students from Chester Upland School District participated in that competition, and they won first place in one of the categories.
Yes, but in terms of what's taught at the at that location, not able to share that with us this evening. I mean, I wanted to know what all was taught there, and I really don't know.
It's a career in technical school, so if you if you like, you, I can pull up the list on the website and I can get it to you.
No, that's okay. Thank you for entertaining me tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think your point about the active show based on what happened. Michigan State. And the children that survived said, if you saw the interview or seen, they said that when they heard those shots, they went into the mode of what they practiced in elementary and middle school remain safe. So it is very valid that what we do.
What hurts me is that we all know that. And today, February, what is this, seventeenth or something like that, twenty twenty-three, we still have not done the drill here in Chester. Is inexcusable, and I could use some other words, um, not that they would be profane, but to express my desire and concern, I'm just puzzled that we still have not done that uh in this day and time. So again, I'll take my seat.
From my understanding, the plan, there there is a plan for it, but I don't think it's actually been executed.
That's my concern. We keep talking about a plan and a thought, but people, we have to do the drill. If you don't do the drill, the young people, the staff do not know what to do. And for me, it is inexcusable that we have not done that district wide yet. Not a budget issue, I don't think. Uh, and if you've got the plan laying there on a piece of paper or if it's on the computer someplace, just do it, people. Um. So. Don't want to continue to beat that horse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion that we adjourn the meeting.
The move is second. Meeting's adjourned.